There we go. Good evening, everybody. This is seven o'clock Novo Riverside Comments LLC hearing for a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL Chapter forty B, paragraph twenty to twenty-three, for a two-hundred-and-one unit multifamily development at two ninety-two and two ninety-four Baker Ave, which is a ten-point-two acre portion of the real property known and numbered as three hundred and three hundred and ten Baker Avenue. Good evening. Since we're all virtual, we will do a roll call. Thomas Swain?
Yes.
Elizabeth Akers-More?
Present.
Elizabeth, Lana Dwyer, Dwyer-Lana?
Here.
And Ravi Fia?
Present.
Present but driving. I hope he was the only one who went to Kai's Road, but nobody else went there. We also-
There was no one else there.
No one else, yeah, good. Sorry about that, Ravi. Also with us tonight are town planning staff Elizabeth Hughes and Kim Johnson, and our town council Kristen Gagelis. Tonight, we are... We will be doing some administrative work, really focusing, starting to focus on the decision, and definitely go through the waiver list tonight. I don't think there's since a draft decision has gone out, has gone out today, but relatively late, so I'm not expecting the board to have fully absorbed all that was in that letter, or in that decision. So, we will do our final deliberation on the conditions as on our next scheduled hearing, which will be April eleventh. Also, the applicant hasn't seen the conditions, and I would like their input on the conditions as well. So that, and to that regard, to that effect, we have requested the continuance of the public hearing portion of this process to April twelfth.
A time extension.
The time extension on the public hearing. And the final date of the conclusion of this process, which then, you know, which would include the forty-day decision piece, has not been extended, so it's just a public input portion. And Elizabeth, I think we now need to vote to accept that, or that time extension?
You would need to, somebody would move and second and have a roll call vote to accept the time extension for the hundred-and-eighty days for a public hearing to April twelfth.
Elizabeth, would you care to make that motion?
Sure. I move that we accept the time extension for the public hearing from a hundred-and-eighty days until April twelfth, which I don't know how many days that makes it, but that's what I mean.
That's fine.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Roll call Elizabeth Akers-More?
Aye.
Ravi Fia?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well, so there you have it. And thank you for the applicant for allowing us a time extension, because we need, since you hadn't seen the decision, and we want to indeed come to a conclusion here in a very cooperative manner, it was really nice that we can still discuss these conditions. So tonight, we will go through the waivers, discuss the waivers that were requested by the applicant, and after that, we will touch, after that, I think I'm going to open it up for a public comment, and then... Who's Alan Peacock? Sorry. Okay, 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 cool. You're making the applicant co-host, it's like, oh! Yeah, so I'm again still after that Zoom bomb incident, I'm pretty fearful here, so, you know, we will keep it pretty, we'll keep our finger on the trigger here to cut people off very quickly. So, after the waiver discussion, we'll have some items to discuss that will make its way or not into the final decision, and then we will have a final discussion about the decision, as I said, April eleventh at seven o'clock at Kai's Road. So, that would be in person, and, you know, would be a very eventful evening for more than one regards.
So I'm not, the April eleventh is your regular meeting, which the board has normally been holding virtual?
Right, but the eleventh, we decided a short while ago that we were going to do that in person.
Okay.
Right, right, because we wanted to celebrate the departure of, oh, celebrate might not be the right word, but-
Don't blame me for making everyone come in person.
Anyway, Elizabeth, would you care to pull up the waiver list? And we'll just go through it. Excellent. Just... Let's go. The waivers, yes. First, and I'll read through them quickly, the waivers from no new construction of utility poles and overhead wires by law. This is only for the construction period of this project, where the, any contractor will pull in some electricity from poles, and they'll go overhead, because it's temporary. And so it's, to me, this is a very, very reasonable waiver to to give. Elizabeth, do you want us to vote on every single waiver? Or can we just, you know?
I think I'm gonna ask for guidance from town council on whether that needs to be done at this point.
No, it's fine to approve the waivers as a whole, if you've discussed them, if you're comfortable doing that, it's also fine to approve them individually.
Let's, 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 I think, let's start with just, and you go through them as a whole, and if we hit a rough spot, or something that's a bit more tricky, we might, we might go back on that decision, but-
Yeah, that makes sense. Obviously, as you know, in the permit itself, they need to be enumerated individually, but discussing them and voting on them as a purpose.
Yeah, okay. Anybody, any of the board members have any comments on waiver number one?
Nope.
Nope, hearing none. Waiver number two is a waiver from the Concord Public Works Stormwater Regulations. And they, the project is in compliance, as they will have to, with Mass DEP regulations, but not with the stormwater management regulations, but now, since I think I saw Dan from Beals and Thomas on the call, Dan, can you, I mean, you should be pretty close to meeting the the stormwater regulations, the Concord Public Works Stormwater Regulations, right?
Yes, that's correct. There's a couple of instances where we're not. One of them is runoff volumes, so the standard that the state requires is peak rates of runoff, and runoff volumes, you know, the only way to meet that for all storm events up to and including the Hundred Year Storm is to be able to infiltrate the difference between the proposed conditions and the existing conditions, so the added impervious area. So we're not able to fully meet that on this site, just with space limitations, but we did know that we are increasing the volume of the Hundred Year Floodplain on-site by a greater difference than the increase in runoff volume during a Hundred Year Storm. So essentially, a good portion of the site during a Hundred Year Storm is in the floodplain, so that additional amount of runoff will be contained on-site, so it's not going down and flooding out downstream of increase, but we're not in strict compliance with that requirement.
Okay, and that's sort of the only one?
Hold on, just give me a second. There was a couple of other minor ones from that we also needed minor relief from, so, one of them is three feet of cover over a drainage pipe. Again, just due to the being in the floodplain, we can't fill certain areas up. We want to fill certain areas up, and the pond elevation is what it's at, so there's a few instances where we're not meeting the full three feet of cover, and what we propose to do in those instances is use a higher grade of reinforced concrete pipe, it's called Class Five, it just has steel in it to make it stronger, that's pretty typical, so. That was another one, and I'm just trying to see if there, I want to say there was one more. Just give me a second. Most of the other ones, you know, all the other things within the Concord Stormwater Regulations, we are meeting, so. That might have been, it might have been those two.
Okay, okay. Stephanie, do you want to say something?
Teo, if I can ask real quick, is it town council's opinion, and does the board wish to have those items specifically identified in this waiver?
I know, this was, I think, sorry, you didn't ask me, but I'm going to answer. I don't think that's, that's, this is just for the board, to make that, to make the board feel comfortable on how how much they get the waiver for, and in this case, it's it's very little, and that really is, is like, you know, it's not a blanket, like, we throw this out, but it's just some specific items.
Yep, I agree. I think that's spot on.
Stephanie?
Just to pick up on Dan Feeney's comments, I have some side notes onto my version of the waiver list, just because as we go through, there's going to be a couple of updates as well, based on the plans that were submitted on the twenty-first, but I believe that if you want the specific sections under the Design and Construction Standards and Details of Public Works, it's under two-point-three-point-one-two-A, and that's the minimum flow line, the minimum cover of our RCP drainage pipes is three feet, and as Dan explained, where we don't have that three feet of cover, what we proposed is a Class Five pipe, and I think that there's a kind of a duplicate one for HDP pipes. It incorporates that same thing that you would have for RCP drainage pipes, that three feet, so that kind of stands, and I think, and aside from Dan's comments relative to runoff volumes, I think, my understanding that was the majority of our request for waivers relative to stormwater management.
Thanks, yeah. And just to jump in, there was one more, and it's just, it deals with, again, the hydraulic pipe sizes on-site. The standard is twenty-five-year, the Concord Regulations ask for a Hundred Year Storm, and the reason to look at a Hundred Year Storm is to make sure that, you know, if the capacity of the drainage pipes isn't sufficient enough, you don't want a pond, a puddle gathering up at the catch basin and hopping a curve and going down to a drainage design point that wasn't intended, like skipping a basin or whatnot, so, in this case, the pipes are designed for the twenty-five-year, if you're again during the Hundred Year Storm, it's, you're in the floodplain, so it's ponding up, coming back into your site, as rather than over-topping and going down, so, those were the three specific ones that we had requested the relief from, and within our response letter to the GPI comment letter, there is references to the section, so we can, if it's helpful for us to highlight those and pull them out, we could do that.
Yeah, as I said, Tom, go ahead.
Teo, this is a question to the town council as well as Elizabeth and Ravi, who are the voting lawyers on the board. My instincts are that it would be better, in this case, to identify some of those sections that were just identified, for example, by town council, because if there ever is a dispute about the applicable regulations, you don't want to have the generalized statement, and then have to litigate, well, no, really, we met not two-one-A, but we really met two-one-B. So I just raised a question for Elizabeth and Ravi, are they comfortable to have the generalized reference as opposed to the specifics, having in mind future enforcement?
I agree with you, Tom, and actually, I was curious about, Teo, your thought that this is already so limited, it didn't seem limited enough to me. I agree with Tom's point.
Okay, okay, no, that's fine, it's also because I was more comfortable with it, because, you know, it comes back in the GPI conditions, and, you know, and it's noted on their drawings, so, but, I mean, in this case, I mean, I think it's, what Stephanie said, she's got the numbers, she can easily plug in those pieces, so that's, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, let's move on to the third waiver, I think there's a total of sixteen of these. Tom, did you have something?
Yeah, on the third waiver, yes, that's the one waiver from Concord Road Opening by Law?
Yeah.
Correct? There is reference to the plan of seven thirty-one twenty-three, is that still the correct identification? Having in mind that during the course of the hearings, there have been a number, I think, of questions about striping, et cetera, and so I've just raised it, whether that's still the right plan.
But that's the reason it's highlighted, so that Stephanie can verify the plan date for me.
So, what I would suggest in my notes, I had put, as shown on, and it was, it would be the site layout and materials plan, which is the project's civil plans. They were originally dated May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, as revised through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, so. And the board's going to use those dates throughout, when it defines the approved plans, it's going to be, unless obviously, you're going to suggest that there's further changes made from the March twenty-first set, but those would be, I believe, the approved plans, so. Just what we're going to have in that marking, that was just, that was a detailed plan, that proposed site entrance, seven thirty-one twenty-three, but the project plans is going to be that submission package that you should have all received last week on the twenty-first, and I believe the initial date of the plans was back, you know, when we started this project, so May of twenty-three, but it revised through March twenty-one, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, anybody, anybody have any any issues with this waiver? Hearing none. Moving on to waiver for the sign bylaw. Stephanie, did I hear you say a while ago in the hearing that you don't need this waiver anymore? Or do you still need a waiver from the sign bylaw?
So, what we have submitted, and I think that we still do need it, because what's the signage that's going to be revised, and you see it now, the sign location, right off of Baker Ave, it's on the site plans, I think it's also on the landscaping plans, it shows you where that area is, but as detailed within the waiver request is to basically take the existing signage that is both at Baker Ave and then Baker Ave Extension, and then to add, kind of in like style, the Novo Riverside reference, so it would be consistent in look, but it would have that extra line on both of those plans to include that, and so I think if you see in sub-part B of that waiver request, that's where I want to make certain that this is captured, that it's not just the main one on Baker Ave, but the Baker Ave Extension also is going to incorporate that. And then the wall signs that are going to be on two ninety-two and two ninety-four, as we presently designed, when you look at the architectural plans, you'll see that the number is atop the entrance there. And I think otherwise, our waivers... Yeah, I guess we don't have wayfinding signage on there. There will likely be wayfinding signage, but I don't believe that the zoning bylaw speaks to that, like when one enters a site to like give them-
Right, right, I don't believe it speaks to that. Did I just see Alan have his hand up?
Yeah, it did, but Stephanie just addressed everything that I was raising my hand for, so I put it back down very politely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, that one makes sense, right? Anybody, any of the board members?
We need any qualifying, I mean, this one's very open-ended. So, I mean, I obviously, I haven't, I'm looking at it, and I don't know, does anyone have to say anything, but otherwise complying with the sign bylaw, or, I mean, lighting, or anything like that?
I don't, I don't think so, because the signage that they're proposing is included on one of the plan sets that will be referenced in the decision.
Okay.
Waiver from the Concord Regulations by law, and its regulations and policies. This is a blanket a blanket waiver, kind of. We can, we can here also ask, what didn't you meet, but I think that might be a long list, but I think since they have gotten, or are about, excuse me, about to get an order? Excuse me, since they're about to get an order of conditions from National Resources, I don't know whether we want to be very specific here. Because it's, I think it's going to be a long and picky list, which, which I, I mean, if they didn't need to go to Natural Resources, then I would say yes, but since they are, they are blessing it, for whatever their jurisdiction is, I'm fine with it as is here.
I agree.
Anybody else? Nobody. Waiver from the, where are we? Section... Okay, waiver from the Concord Zoning bylaw, section one-three-two, definitions.
Would it be helpful if I moved in even more?
No, I think, I think I'm fine, I'm fine with this.
Is this just generally, I excuse my ignorance, but is this just general, does this generally go in these decisions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I've seen, I've seen it, I've seen it differently as well, where there is just almost an Excel spreadsheet, where the decision says, and that's, that's as an attachment then to the decision, but it is always something that the, that the ZBA will go through, because you want to, you need to, you need to be specific what you are granting relief from. So, this is, this is pretty typical. And I think this one is just, yeah, this waiver is pretty straightforward, pretty logical, right? Because that's, we're getting twenty-five percent of affordable units here, so I do not have a problem with this waiver. Anybody else? There we go, scrolling, scrolling, nobody else? Yeah, the use regulations, which is also pretty, pretty clear, right? No that, you know, we're building multifamily in an industrial zone, so. I think this is a waiver that's easy to give. Anybody? Nobody? Any comments? We'll go, we'll go, we'll go through, we'll go the dimensional regulations, right, and here, there's something else highlighted as well that needs to be filled out, but we've, the applicant has come up with a site plan that, you know, doesn't meet the regulations, and we've gone higher and lower, and of course, we're going, right, we've discussed this. So, we know what the plans are, and I think, you know, from the plans as they have developed during this process, it's now sort of backing into this waiver request, and this making this waiver request a little bit more specific to be tailored to the proposed buildings.
Go ahead. Could I interrupt you for a second?
Absolutely.
Go back to the use section, I just want, because there's one word that bothers me, I just found it, I'd looked at it before, in the middle of the request for the waiver on use, it says, "The applicant requests a waiver to allow use of site for no less than a total of two-hundred-and-one multi-unit dwellings, et cetera." Shouldn't that be for no more than? Again, "The applicant requests a waiver to allow use of site for no less than a total of two-hundred-and-one." I would have thought that would have been for no more than.
Correct. And I think it should be a total of two-hundred-and-one dwelling units and two buildings.
The only reason I would suggest, considering the word "no more than," because if the applicant were to say, "Look, I'm only going to put in a hundred-and-ninety-five units," would that, I don't know, I guess I would say, well, do I care about that? It's less.
I think you're right. I mean, Elizabeth, you agree, right? Another question, though, in that same sentence, where we say, "As may be depicted in the final plans," should it say "as will be depicted," or "as is depicted in the final plans"?
I agree. All shall be depicted.
Yeah.
About ten lines up there.
No, you were right. No, you were.
Is that the only one?
Oh.
Sorry to interrupt you, Teo.
Nope, this is perfect, it's perfect. It's funny that you sometimes you just read stuff, and you just read straight over it, right? And it's like, oh, wow.
That's why town council gets paid so well, they read each word.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. So, Stephanie?
Yes, to Elizabeth's point, that's a, that's a great kind of point that she raised, and I, the way that I typically see it done, when waivers are granted, it gets tied into the approved plan, so then you have like that benchmark that ties it in, you know, as shown on the revised, on the approved plan, and then the, kind of the other kind of part and parcel of that is typically the way it works is the, the last set of plans that an applicant submits, that kind of updates, you know, includes all the updates, which is what we did last week, those are typically Those are typically termed the approved plans. And so then you can tie everything into the approved plans and you may have conditions that require an adjustment to the approved plan. And that's okay, because what happens is, you're then going to have a condition most likely that says. You know, prior to issuance of building permits, the applicant prepare final plans and they give it to the, you know. Planner, you know, thirty days in advance of whenever they want to get a building permit to make certain that it incorporates all of that. So, one way to provide this board with an assurance. Um, that your waivers are 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 really are tied to the project that we've been talking about for months. Is to reference it as, as shown on the approved plans. Um, and to kind of use that as a defined term throughout. And then if there's conditions that require tweaks to the approved plans or, you know, additional detail. Um, you, you know, that's required to be shown on the final plans, if that makes sense.
Good. Have you cons- do you see it used sometime where you have a final paragraph that says, uh, in the event of a. Um, disagreement between the condition and the plans, the final plans shall control, something along that line?
It's a good question. I'm not certain that I've, I've seen that, um. But, but I, I understand what you're getting at, you know, in in the event of um, an interpretation, you know, it's as a, as a. Shown on the, I think, I think maybe what you meant is the approved plans, because you can only.
Correct.
Yeah, right, right. I mean, that's, that's um, I don't think that I've seen that, but it's not a bad way to make certain that you provided the clarity.
So I think that's probably something that we can talk about, um, as far as the conditions. Um, but I also know that for this section right here, um, all of the plans will be um. Oops, will be listed in, I think it's appendix, I think it's appendix A. Um, so you can just say the approved plans. Um, listed in appendix A. But to Tom's question about that, that condition, um, I think that's something that we can definitely. Um, talk about with um, town council and I do know that. Uh, the board's forty B consultant Judy Barrett did also jump on, so we can loop her in. Between now and the April eleventh meeting as, as well.
And and then if, if I may also, I'm not trying to overstep into Judy or town council's role here at all, um, but. Wh- when you have waivers that are are waiving a specific provision, you can reference the plans, but you know, as approved by the decision. So for in your instance here of the, is it? No more than, no less than two hundred and one units? I'm fairly confident that in the beginning part of your decision, you're going to have written that the board is approving. The project for two hundred and one units. Um. And I think that if the decision is worded like that and the applicant comes back and says, I want to build one fifty. They would have to come back for a mod- uh modification and depending on what that variance factor is, is whether it's a minor modification or a. Um, or a substantial or insubstantial change in the language of forty B.
We'll just make it two hundred and one units.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to those, as well. Just make it two hundred and one units.
So, next one, um, waiver eight. There where we, uh, where we stuck, um.
So Stephanie, I don't know you or if somebody on your team can, because I believe the height of one building has changed. Along with the length.
Um, in terms, uh, there's not a, there's not a length. Um.
Oh, just height, okay.
Dimension, yeah, so Michelle is not on, but the figures that I have from her are. Um, the average grade to the highest roof point on two ninety-two is sixty-five feet, six inches. And um, relative to two ninety-four, that average grade to the highest roof is. Seventy-one feet. Um, and so the waivers are for the feet, but then also um. Within the bylaw, it also defines um, the dimensional with, with the number of stories, so. Uh, here two ninety-two has its maximum stories is five and in two ninety-four it's six.
Dan?
Can, can we add just a little wiggle room, maybe a foot? Just to. Opinions.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that's, that's good. And we want to also save, you know.
I'm sorry, two ninety-two is. Five stories and two ninety-four, six?
Mm-hmm, yes, okay, correct, thank you.
And then, and then also um, want to say how that uh, height was defined by Michelle here, average grade to the highest point of the roof.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying for two ninety-two, sixty-six sounds fine, there's six inches of. Fluff, uh, to take into account construction changes. So if we could do seventy-two rather than the seventy-one for two ninety-four, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, and it's average grade, so you never know what, how it's going to be graded, that, you know, with a bit of topsoil that moves here or there. So.
Thank you very much.
A landscape buffer, um. And I've, I don't know why do we want to, I mean. To Stephanie's point or to the, I don't know who made the point, but yeah, sometimes this is indicated on a plan where it doesn't meet, but given, given. Given that this site is, you know, integrated in a larger uh, master plant, if you will, development. I, you know, there is no clear property lines and and there is a lot of interplay between the various properties. Um, you know, I don't think necessarily a landscape buffer is needed. Between those property, between the novel property and the remainder of uh, the Baker. Av building, so I'm fine with this one. Um, and if any of the uh, any of my. Fellow board members have any comments? Hearing none. Um, waiver number ten. Um. I, I hate to go too quick here and know that, I know that Tom is reading all of these really carefully.
No, I, I had read them. I wonder, I had read them before you, with the meeting, uh, I read what they put in there, exhibit G. So, don't worry about me, I'm okay.
Cool, cool, um. What about this, uh, the flood bank conserv- flood plain conserv- the district? Um, I think, um, again, given the fact that the. They meet um, as the P uh, regulations, they meet the uh, they've increased the flood storage. And they, they are getting an uh. A natural resources orders of condition. Um, I'm fine with, with giving this uh. Waiver.
I agree.
And actually, you know, same, same concept for waiver number eleven, right? The Valens Conservancy uh, District. Um, getting an order of conditions, so. You know, I think that's, that's why we should grant this, this waiver. That was a bit, if you can scroll down a bit. Thank you, um, earth removal and fill permit. Anybody have any uh? Comments on this? Nobody, nobody. Um. Then any, we.
Sorry, feel, just as long as we're comfortable with that, our, whatever construction plan we have addresses the movement, I'm sure it does, but.
The.
Yeah.
The condition, the proposed condition is um, pretty robust.
Right.
Yeah, good.
Like earth removals you were saying, Elizabeth, so.
I hope not.
One of your many things.
So. Is, is, Ravi, Ravi is still on, right? He's been so quiet lately? Ravi, are you on?
Yeah, I wasn't able to unmute myself, um.
Oh.
Cause I rejoined by Zoom and I, I grandf- and.
Did he, did he, so now, now that you're uh, unmuted, do you have any comments on uh, what we've been talking about?
No, I, I agree, uh, on earth removal, you know, I, I think. I, I, I don't see them doing a- anything more than needs to be done to. Put these two buildings in the ground, so, um. Uh, and I, and I did see in the conditions that there's, uh, you know, some, some relating to the, to the truck routes and. And moving the earth offsite, uh, so I'm good with this.
Good, good, excellent, um. Next waiver, uh, next waiver, we need a little bit uh, help, because it's not three hundred and four spaces anymore, uh, right, Steph?
That's correct. It's two eighty-four parking spaces and the average is one point four spaces per dwelling unit.
Yep, yeah. Um, and the board is, is fine with this, uh, with this ratio?
Did, did we, pardon me, did we have any input from our consultants about that adjustment? Acceptable or not?
So what I can tell you, I don't know specifically, um. Recall if it's in the consultants traffic study or not, I believe it is. Um, but I can also tell you that um, one point five is um, consistent. Um, in the bylaw for affordable housing projects. Um, additionally, it's consistent with what the board has done for um. Like Brookside Square, um, that was the combined business residence off the Harold Street, was also one point five. Spaces per unit, um, given the location and um, it being close to transit.
And, and, and given the fact that there is quite a bit of parking available, just, you know, off of this site. Um, and I, I know that there is going to be potentially. Some, um, some instrument that will allow some overflow parking on the other Baker Street Ave site. But that, that is really, I think. That's piece property that's not on a, a consideration at the moment and and one point four, I think is a. Is a really reasonable number, um, from what I've seen, so I'm very comfortable. Giving this uh. Uh, giving this waiver. And, you know, given its location. Then uh, waiver number fourteen, uh, building permit.
Yeah, I think Stephanie had a.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, Stephanie, you missed that.
That's okay, and I'm not quite certain if this is the appropriate area to address this, but I think that it is, so, um, and, and, um. Relative to that overflow parking that um, we're talking about, um, I, I think that. It, it would perhaps work if the applicant can expand its request here. Um, because if you look at the zoning bylaw, there is an allowance for offsite parking. Um, provided that, um, the, the entities have either an ownership interest or an easement or a lease, right? So here, um, what I'm talking about is not our base parking, but to allow for an overflow parking onto three hundred Baker. Now, under the bylaw, the, um, it's under location, is where it's at, it's under the. Seven, seven, two, seven, it talks about location, that's where it includes this. Um, the allowing some piece to have some part, some parking on an adjacent parcel. Um, is allowed, and it says for non-residential, so the waiver would be to allow that same to. To allow this project to have some overflow parking on three hundred Baker. And I think that it can be wrapped into the forty B decision, I think it makes sense, and I think that. Um, there's, there's actually some case law out there, um, kind of like, you know, HAC decisions like Andover and whatnot, that kind of. Deal with similar issues where something is, technically it's off the site, but it's associated and affiliated with it. And here where we can get easement, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, provided that we obviously show the board that there is an easement in place, but I think that we can address that. Overflow parking on three hundred Baker, um, kind of here and now, if, if the board would consider that.
Yeah, I, I actually, I indeed missed that, the need to, it, that piece of. That it's allowable in, in, on the zoning, um, overflow parking and. And I, and I think, from that point of view, I think we can address it here. Um, and, you know, we can allow overflow parking. Um, although it's, you know, and the waiver, as you said, is for uh, residential use and not for business use.
Right.
And that, that would be the waiver, yeah, yeah, and whether, yeah, because I need, I don't think we can condition that, uh. That you go get an easement, right, but uh.
Right, but if we can provide the easement.
Then that, that's, yeah, that's fine, but we allow, at least we allow overflow parking. Okay. Building permit. Um. And extended zoning bylaw requires for building permit or supersede waiver, yeah? I, I, I do find these. If, I do find this a, a sort of an odd waiver request, I, I know where you're coming from, uh, but it's like. Yeah, that's, that's why you have a decision here. Um, so, um, if anybody have any, uh. Any comments on this one, and actually it's in, uh, it's for number fifteen. Uh.
Yeah.
Right, it's, that's. The crux of the matter. Anybody? Hearing none. Last, last waiver, I think, right? Yep, last waiver, uh. This bylaw shall not interfere with. Yeah, same, actually. That's way better. I have no, no issue with that one either, I mean, it's, it is what it is.
I'm sorry, I actually have a question going back to number fifteen, the certificate of occupancy.
Yeah.
So, um, that would be what has to be met before families are able to move in, is that, that's right?
Right.
And so who would be the regulatory body who would say, yes, everything works, people can live here?
Building inspector.
So, so, okay. The waiver for fifteen, Stephanie can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, it's not to waive the requirement for certificate of occupancy. Um, it specifically states that the building inspector, um, sorry, cannot issue a certificate of occupancy. You know, unless it complies with this bylaw.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Um, the, the waiver is required because he is going to be issuing a certificate of occupancy for a. Use that does not comply with the bylaw.
Right, got it, okay, thank you.
E- exactly, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen are all of that same, if you will. It's because we're doing forty B, it kind of turns things a little bit around, so.
Okay, those were all the waivers.
A, a question on their application in their. A a question on their application and their request for waivers next to the last one before uh bylaw construction, they had one about site plan review, is that no longer relevant?
Um Kristen.
Yeah, I can.
Take that one?
Yep, it's it's sort of similar to these like fourteen through sixteen, um which are also, you know, not necessarily technically needed, but site plan review is a different manner of reviewing the project. Because this is a complete comprehensive permit, it does not need to go through site plan review, so it's not necessary for it to be for the requirements of site plan review to be waived.
Thank you.
Absolutely. If I may jump in, sometimes you hear people refer to substantive waivers and procedural waivers, so this falls into that bucket of procedural waiver that exactly forty B defines the process, the review process.
Good. Elizabeth, there goes more.
Yes.
Would you be so kind to make a motion?
Sure. Um.
But.
What specifically would Elizabeth Hughes say, I should say, just.
I and Kristen will uh correct me if I'm wrong.
Or Kristen, what should I say?
Elizabeth Hughes would probably say that um the um move to grant the waivers of one through sixteen as um reviewed and discussed this evening and enumerated in the decision.
Is there a potential, anything we just discussed is going to be, any of the wording is going to be changed, or can I put in some language about?
Um so with the un amendment to um item uh it is, um I waiver two on the public works um regulations to enumerate the sections, um the requested waiver sections.
Um, the, okay, the requested waiver sections, the changes that we made, I'm just wondering if we're gonna, if on second review, we're gonna change a word or two anywhere that will not alter meaning, but I should leave us some flexibility.
Um.
Such as I moved that we accept the waivers as discussed um and written in the, it's dated.
Draft, the draft decision.
Draft decision, um as discussed tonight with the addition of the sections um and, sorry, I don't have both things up, so I can't see.
Public Works, um Public Works Regulations waiver number two.
There you go. Um. And any other clerical, you know, change or something like that that doesn't alter.
And grammatical, yeah.
There you go.
Before you take a vote, do you have to open this up for public comment?
I mean, we we can, let let me, I mean, uh I I will open it up for public comment, um. I think we're pretty open uh to begin with, but if any, any public comment, anyone out of the public wants to talk, then uh be my guest. Mr. Bergman.
Hi, uh Keith Bergman, fifty-six White Avenue, uh speaking as Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Just wanted to to uh share with the zoning uh Board of Appeals that that one of the I I think one of the waiver requests that had originally been made, which is not necessary for you to grant, is the waiver of the uh sewer improvement fee for the affordable units, and the reason you don't, you won't have to waive that is because the the trust has voted to fund that amount, uh three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars and change from uh from the trust's fund. This has been on our radar screen since at least last summer, when the um when the developer had in indicated to the select board that they might uh approach the town about the about covering that cost, uh the the trust has been happy to do it, uh we follow this project from the inception, we're we're delighted with uh the progress that's been made uh you know, in in your review uh these many months, and uh and we're happy to uh to commit our uh uh funds uh towards uh towards that sewer improvement fee, so thanks very much for your work, thanks to the applicant for the uh for their project and looking forward to seeing this happen, thanks so much.
Thank you, man, thank you, thank you for uh for the funds. Anybody else? Seeing none. Um. We had a motion. Um. Do I hear a second from Ravi?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Elizabeth Aguirre Moore.
Aye.
Ravi for you.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, waivers are approved. Uh so that was the bulk of uh tonight's uh meeting, I did wanna adjust in preparation of of some of the uh conditions. Um wanna flush out maybe a couple of other things and and see whether anybody else has anything to add or to say about conditions that they've already read. Um. My um at one point, um just at the end of the last hearing, we had uh Linda Scapito made a remark about uh the underground parking or the below the below the building pocket, covered parking, whether that was going to be subsidized for people living in this, in the uh the non-market rate units. Um we punted on that, I punted on that, uh because it was just sort of after we closed the public uh hearing. Um but it then also asked whether the applicant had anything to say about it, so that's where I wanna go first, if if we can, to see whether the applicant uh has uh what the applicant's stance is on on this matter. So Stephanie, Dan, anybody?
Sure, I will, I didn't know if um if Alan wants to say anything, but but if not, I'll go first. Um.
Go ahead. Go go ahead, go ahead, Steph.
Okay, so um as we had discussed, this was raised, I think initially maybe two meetings ago, maybe three meetings ago, um the intent by the applicant is to, if you will, decouple the um the lease for the units and then um ability to park in the in the covered garage underneath the two buildings. Um and we intend to, um that would be a cost, and that would be um a a uniform cost, so meaning it 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 would have the same cost, parking fee would apply to any resident, um and the way that I think is helpful, at least in my mind, to consider this is um covered parking isn't isn't something like water, heat, it's 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 an option that people have. Um and you know, people choose all kinds of options when they choose to live, you know, their their cable program, some people, it's very important to have all of the channels on their television. Um some people could care less and they just stream Netflix if they even do that. Um some people don't care if they have covered parking, some people, it's very important, so it's it's one of those um features or amenities that's really not tied to the the core concept of housing, um because that is provided. Um and another way to look at it, obviously, is the ability to um for Noble Riverside to collect fees for parking, it does help fund the whole management of the project, whi- which, you know, includes the units that are affordable units, so it's eh there is a benefit, if you will, really, to the affordable units, because it's helping um make the project not expensive and therefore a viable project, so um if there's anything Alan, you wanna add on top of that, but I I I believe that's position that um we're coming at this.
No, that's that's a, that's accurate, Steph, thank you for articulating that.
Um, let me, let me we uh say something to for this, and then then I I would love to hear uh what uh my, the other board members have to say, I I was very um I was, I was happy that uh parking was gonna be decoupled and the and that, you know, that was not included in the the rent, because I think that would including that in the rent sort of makes all, makes rent more expensive, right? Even if you don't have a car, you still pay for your underground parking, so the fact that I was decoupled, I think was really uh was really important uh for me, and um and I think that sort of sets a lower price point for just what people have to pay for their apartment, and then indeed, if you have more disposable income, you can buy that separately, and then you can indeed make your own decisions on what you, what you wanna buy and what you don't wanna buy, so. Um. I, I mean, is there any, any my board members that wanna chime in on this one?
I agree with you, I think that's really well put, um that it's keeping the price point a little bit lower and offering more choice, I think that's great.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think that's, I see other Elizabeth nodding her head, so um. I think that that would, you know. Hearing or seeing no other comments from uh from the board, and I think we'll 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 leave it at that. Um. Are there, is there anybody else who uh wants to still speak or say something, board members, public?
Yeah, my my only other comment at this point on the conditions was uh, you know, we've got the kind of proportional dispersion condition, I think it's A four, uh that the uh RHSO had recommended, and I agree with. Um. I'm not sure if we wanna say something about um ensuring the proportional balconies. Cause it's my understanding that not every unit is gonna have a balcony.
Um. I. I'm ju- uh yeah, I I look at at uh sort of like people that have a bit more forty B understanding here, and I, as I see it anyways, is also that, and I think we talked about that at our very first meeting, is that if you, if you ha- if you are in an apartment, that these these apartments are not, uh the the uh the affordable units are not uh static. Because if you live in an apartment and you start earning too much income, you know, you might stay in that apartment, but that means that the next available apartment, which might be anywhere else, would then automatically become a uh an affordable unit. And and correct me if I'm wrong on that, but sort of as a result, uh that it's it's very uh, well, I I think the 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 affordable units are not static, they change over time. And and we can, if you wanna add something that in in uh in that condition that I need, there should be some balconies uh included in uh the affordable units to begin with, I think that's I think that's fine, um and these plans will also be uh be approved uh by uh mass housing, but um if you wanna include that, then we should, we should do that. Stephanie, go ahead.
I think that's consistent with what the RHSO is looking for, uh the applicant is okay with it, I I wouldn't mind having that in there.
Okay, good. Stephanie?
I was just gonna say, I I see that Judy's on the call, so you may wanna also just confirm with her, but I believe that the, so mass housing is the subsidizing agency here, and at the time that Noble is gonna go for its final approval, one of the things it submits is is the um uh affordable fair housing and marketing plan, and uh the state agency then kind of looks at you know, where the units are, and they um have a say in terms of making certain that they're distributed throughout, so I think you have a little bit of that, that's 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 coming in at the state level, and that's that's actually part of the 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 state's purview, and this, it's, you know, forty B is like this, this combination, right, it's part local, and then it's part state, you know, um dictating it, so I don't know if you want uh Judy to weigh in on that.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, Judy, Judy can speak up any anytime.
So, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um. I mean, Stephanie's right that ultimately the subsidizing agency is going to look at the affirmative fair housing marketing plan from a fair housing perspective, my experience is that if the board has reasonable conditions pertaining to equitable distribution of the affordable units, um typically, they will try to honor that, I I think where it gets a little bit trickier is if the conditions sort of become unreasonable from the subsidizing agency's point of view, but um you know, but a general concern about equitable distribution, I I've never seen mass housing have a problem with. Um, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I just wanna, I'm 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 out of the country, so it's been a little bit challenging trying to participate, but I just wanna understand the parking situation, my understanding is that typically in a mixed income development under forty B, the affordable units are at least guaranteed one parking space within their rent. That's not being dismissed here, is it?
Correct, it's uh there are the, the uh there is free parking outside. Uh, you know, uncovered parking, there is uh, one can purchase parking uh that is covered below the building.
Okay.
But no, there is, there is a parking space, uh and I just, and Stephanie, can you just confirm that uh that there is a parking space for everybody? An unpaid parking space for everybody?
Um, I.
Who wants one?
Yeah, the number of exterior spaces, um if Dan's on, you can comment what that number is. But it but it it was.
Yeah, there's a hundred and fifty-seven podium parking spaces and a hundred and twenty-seven surface parking spaces within the lot itself.
Okay, and then and then there is.
There's fifty-one, it there's fifty-one, right, so it's it's totally fine.
Okay, good, good.
Okay.
That answer it, Judy, or?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, cool. Miss Drit, you know, up next. Oops, can you?
I've tried to unmute there.
Yeah, there you are.
Thank you. Pamela Drit, thirteen Concord Green. I know that in the in the pet, in a previous um meeting, the uh applicant said that they could no longer uh lay, they weren't planning any longer to uh set the electrical conduit to allow interior charge, charging. Because the fire department said they didn't want to have uh electric cars parking in there. Uh and I think that we need to have somebody talk to our fire department, because this is uh not the first time I've heard of the fire department discouraging interior batteries and electric vehicles. And I think the fire department is behind in um modern uh transportation and our efforts to be sustainable, and that the fire department needs to change, not the applicants. There's not, in in the future, all the buildings will be, well, nearly all of transportation will be electric, one hundred percent electric, and all the buildings, the new buildings are going to need to have that uh for the fire department to disincentivize new construction is is very against the town's sustainability goals, and it's also not reasonable. Um gasoline cars explode and burn all the time.
Thanks, uh uh thank you for that, um there are some conditions in this permit that uh and the applicant has uh electric charging in their in their covered, in their covered parking, um to the maximum extent that the uh fire department. uh fire department allows, so.
See, that's the problem, why is the fire department making a
and a That that's not, you you need to call the fire chief, I mean, it's, I I hear where you're coming from, but we're, you know, the applicant here does the best that they can do, given the rules that that they were given. Um and we should, we should commend them for that, doing doing that much.
Oh, yes.
And
But they were going.
And it's like, they can't do anything, and and you know, we we're trying to come to a decision here. Uh. We're trying to come to a decision here on on this project, and we're not trying here, and it's not the CBA's charge uh to change the fire department's uh ways, ways and means, and I, you know, and and I'm not a fire, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a fire uh fighter, and I'm not, I'm not I don't know what's involved with fi- uh fighting a fire, but I I know that I've worked on projects in other towns where the fire department just had no vehicles in underground parking, so I think the fi- fi- uh fire department here is I don't wanna say progressive, but at least they're, they 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 wanna do the right thing, but you know, they don't feel comfortable fighting a fire below ground, then, you know, I I I'm I'm fine with that, you know, and 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 a gasoline engine, you know, you can sprinkle water on it. I'm not sure whether you can sprinkle water on a uh on electric car that's uh that's inflamed, so.
There's new new stuff, if 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 we make the if the fire department does change its mind, would the applicant be able to go back to their original plans?
Um I I actually, I actually, we, I edited one of the conditions that indeed, the fire department wanted uh only a limited amount of uh underground electric charging, and that was in our condition, and we added that conditions, like they can do more with our uh without our approval, if they get a letter from the fire department that it's fine to do more. But, you know, they need to have the support from the fire department, so.
Thank you.
So that's, there we are, um. Anything else, anybody else? Um so let's uh have a motion to continue the public hearing on this project to Nov- April eleventh at seven o'clock.
I move that we continue this public public hearing until April eleventh at seven o'clock um at Kai, at one forty-one Kaiser Road.
Yes, yes.
Second.
And all those in favor, Elizabeth A. Colesmore.
Hi.
Ravi Faria.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, thank you very much, um does this conclude our evening, uh Ms. Hughes?
Yes, I guess.
Yeah, we we are adjourned.